These are some of the Lion leaders at Potascaola Elementary reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, the adoption is approved. The second item, we have a presentation from Mr. Smith from the high school on lockdown procedures.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Mr. Smith, I'm the assistant principal of the high school. And today I wanted to discuss or show you what we did at the high school to present lockdown levels to our students. Because this can be a very confusing and overwhelming situation within the building. So we tried to do something fun to help them understand that not every situation... Got it, okay, so this is our lockdown levels, level 1, 2, and 3. The moment somebody in a building hears lockdown, what do they think? They think level 3 active danger, there's an active shooter within the building. Well, there's two other levels below that that we wanted to make sure that our students understood. They want to know, we want to know certain things about what they're doing. So we wanted them to learn each level. So when we announce something over the announcements, our students are aware of what the threat is or what is going on and what could possibly be going on in the building. Because we don't specifically say what's going on unless it were an active shooter situation. So the things that we did when we sat down with administration and our resource officer, we said, "Do the students know what each level means?" Probably not. Do the students know how to react? Maybe, we're not sure, but we wanted to make sure of this. Do the students know what they should not do? And those are the big things that we wanted to make sure. Okay, so what we did is we created a presentation of me showing every single level and we asked these six questions. We wanted them to understand, well, what is a real world example of each level? What if you were out of your classroom and a level got called, what do you do? What if the bell rings and it's time to transition? Can you transition, can you not? Can you get your phone out of the phone holder? Lockdown level, I'm going to call home, I want to talk to my parents and tell them what's going on, should you communicate home? So we want them to understand what they should be doing in these situations. And then at the end again, what are you allowed to do and what can you not do in these situations? Okay? So this is the actual video of me kind of explaining the very beginning of the level lockdown 2. You'll see I'll kind of explain what a level 2 is. Then I'll go over the very first question. I pause, so staff, what they would do is during our E&amp;I, our enrichment and intervention period, the staff would pause it and they would have a tabletop discussion with their students. Okay, what do we do? What's an example? What's the real world situation that would actually happen with a level 2 lockdown? Why would we be at a level 2? And then the students got to discuss and throw ideas and things like that. And then I'd come back on and I would answer it. All right, now it's time for a level 2 lockdown. So let's read over level 2. This is a teach-in-place lockdown. This is where there's an unauthorized visitor. Level 2 is the orange level. The threat is inside the school. Classrooms are closed and locked. We continue teaching. We account for all students. We close the windows and blinds and you call the building secretary to report missing students. All right, let's ask some questions here. All right, what are some examples of real world situations that put the school in a level 2 lockdown? Go ahead and discuss. So teachers would ask the students, give me examples. And then a second later... The answer, staff or student in need of medical attention, parent or student escalated and there is a possibility of a negative confrontation. Student is insubordinate to staff and trying to move through the building. Next question. What if you were not in your assigned classroom when the level 2 is announced? Go ahead and discuss. Your answer, during the level 2, students are to get to their classroom as quickly as possible. Teachers will let students into the classroom and make sure doors are closed and locked and wait for further instructions. Teacher... Very good, all right, so that was it. So we did all the levels, we did it that way. We went through all six questions, but we did it more of a discussion, open discussion. Everybody's curious about this, everybody wants to talk about it. They want to speak their mind on it. And so what we were doing is really trying to teach them up. What is a level 2? Oh, I didn't know, level 2 didn't mean I was in that... A lot of times they're not in danger. It's a medical emergency, somebody has a heart attack in the building, somebody chokes, something happens where we need the medics in the building. And we don't want everybody freaking out like, there's somebody, there's something wrong in the building. And so what we do in our building is we get on the P.A., we let them know what lockdown level we're in. And if there is no threat to the students, we let them know that you are safe, stay in place, lock the doors, stay there, everything is okay. They don't need their phone because it's just going to cause chaos. And then the office will be bombarded with phone calls from home, what's happening, what's going on? At the level 3 is the time where they need their phone. They need it on them, so if they leave the building, they can communicate with whoever they need and they can tell people that they're safe where they are. And that's it, that was our lockdown presentation for United High School.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay, item 3, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters, Southwest Looking Education. Item 4, approval of minutes. We have the org meeting and the regular meeting from January.
Motion 4A and 4B.
Second.
Any comments? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 5, financial report.
Motion approval.
Second.
Included with the agenda is the January 31st executive summary. Fairly routine month, we did get our third income tax settlement for the month. The quarter ended October, December 31st. The income tax, the previous two had come in well above estimates. This one came in actually well below estimates, but eight and a half percent lower than we anticipated. But the good thing is we are still about two and a half percent higher than we anticipated. That's a 10% increase we estimated, so we're still running about 12% for the year. We have one more tax settlement left, getting a better feel. But, you know, they may be heading towards recession, there's maybe some signs of that. But that's something we just wanted to bring to your attention that was, you know, pretty different than what we expected. Other than that, it's a fairly routine month. Revenue is about 2% higher than we expected and expenditures about 2% lower than we expected, so we're doing very well.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 6, personnel consent calendar. We have A through I.
Motion approval, A through I.
Second.
Anything to point out?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. Any comments? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 7, personnel approval of volunteers.
Motion 7A.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Epstein?
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 8, business items. There are quite a few. I think we could just open them all and then discuss which ones we want. So there's A, A through M? No.
N.
Yeah, M as in Mary. N as in Nancy.
I would prefer that we do A separate.
Sure.
Motion approval 8A.
Second.
Discussion?
I'll just say, I still don't like the wording on this, but it is as it is. I know it's the second reading, but I just wanted to, again, make that public.
Any other comments? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Okay, B through N? Or separate if somebody wants something separate?
I have a question. I have item 7 as business items. Does anybody else have that?
You probably need to refresh your... I had to make a change to the agenda. So you just need to refresh it.
We had a separate personnel for...
So how do I refresh?
Family member.
That one? I'm sorry.
No problem.
Just confusing the...
No.
Join the meeting, there we go. Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome. No problem.
That fixed it.
I have a motion 8B through K.
I'll second that.
Okay. B is, do we want to talk about...
I can run through them all.
Yeah, okay.
So B is a MOU with our Teamsters transportation unit to allow... They have a sick leave bank to help out those that are in need of additional sick days. So if someone has applied for disability, we allow that to not count towards the days because they're working on getting that covered while they need some additional help. So it's just the right thing to do.
And we've done in the past.
Yeah, we have done in the past too. So there's a need this year, which is why that's arising. Is there a need, I'm assuming there's a need? There is.
Yes, there was a need, yes.
The next is an overnight trip for rugby and Dan Hayes is here if you want him to touch on it or speak or if you have any questions. If not, I'm sure he'll stay back there.
Where are you going, Dan? Where are you going?
Just going to Cleveland.
Oh, just Cleveland, okay.
On the 25th, so that's probably the biggest game they ever played at Barstool after about 30 years.
I was going to ask that, they've been, St. Louis has had this one for 30 years?
Very long time. Cleveland is the hotbed of rugby in my interest.
It's exciting, are they going to put that on Spectrum News or...
It should be broadcast on...
Okay. You'll let us know?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I am going to ask, Mr. Jellison is supposed to be here tonight, but he's at home with a sick child. So I am going to ask Mr. Tancheski to touch this briefly on a couple of changes of the softball trip. So if you want to, maybe come to the mic so that...
It's the same trip they did last year. The only, the major change is the transportation. Mr. Jellison had determined that a lot of the families wanted to go and they wanted to take their kids. So as opposed to transporting on a charter, they're allowing the families to take their students. If a family could not take a student, they signed basically a travel release and another individual would transport their child. In addition to that, we're going to make sure that anyone who is transporting them as a chaperone will have a background check and they will be taking the students. Everyone was afforded the opportunity to go. Some families decided that they had family vacations planned and they're not going to go.
But everyone will be riding with a adult?
An adult. It will either be their parent or a background-checked chaperone.
Got it.
Which a parent has signed a travel release for.
Will the kids still be staying together as a team?
I believe so.
Okay.
That's my belief, but I can double-check with Mr. Jellison on that one. But my guess is yes, because I'm sure they're going down to a facility where they're going to play a variety of games.
The fore was just a little vague on how they were getting there, so...
They are staying together.
Okay. And all of this is no cost to the district, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we have the baseball team, they're headed to Tennessee over spring break. We have our annual agreement with Ohio High School that we sign each year. Do you want to touch on G, Rick?
Yes, the amounts and rates that the board approves each year, we don't really have a say. So rates as determined by the county auditor, but we have to approve it.
H is our preschool playground, this will be the new playground for the preschool. That will be soft surface like the rest of our elementary, so a long time coming, really excited about.
When are they going to get started on that?
I'm not sure the exact date, do you know, Dan?
Always this summer.
Okay. And is this basically just for the soft ground or are we adding more equipment and stuff as well?
So the old equipment will be removed, so we'll be all new equipment and then a big portion of the soft surface and then there's some parts that are demolished, but those are still...
So similar to like what we did at Aetna or at WIZ?
Yeah, I mean it's especially at preschools.
Okay.
And will we have some accessible playground swings and whatnot?
Yeah, that's the reason.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, perfect. All right, we only went through A, no, we didn't, we went through K, okay.
So Rick, do you want to do I?
So I is AEP easement for the new K3 to allow them to install power whenever they need to. Location's P as determined by the architect for the project where it will be, but we have to give them easement to allow them access our property. J is our Kirksville Elementary renovation bids. We're very happy, we have like five bidders that were very competitive. The low bid, Pepper, came in just slightly below the advertised cost price, but the advertised price included furniture but did not. So in essence, it was a little over, but we have enough cushion in the budget to cover that overage, so we're in very good shape. Kurt is here to answer any questions you may have about the bid. Originally, we weren't planning on doing alternates, but some of the alternates were extremely lower than the estimated costs, like the roof, the estimate to be half million, it came in 218. There was concern that if we awarded without it, that they may jack the prices up.
Right.
So we went ahead and worked with Dr. Perkins and Mr. Jinnell on various bid items, the prices and it's the list that we came up with. It totals about $513,000 in alternates for Kirksville. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have on that or Kurt can.
Have we used Pepper Construction before on any other projects?
No, we have never used them before. Gar Miller, Kurt, do you have you? Can you talk about Pepper real quick?
So we've not personally worked with Pepper before, but they have a good reputation. They're a multi-state company. So yeah, we're looking forward to working with them and partnering with them.
Is there anything locally that they've done that we might know?
I can, I can find out. From whom I know, they're working in Westerville, but that's not a school project from what I understand.
But they have built schools before?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are they based out of?
They're based out of Chicago. They have an office here in Columbus and one in Cincinnati, one in Indianapolis, one in Milwaukee. So they're a, they're a large company.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions about any of the specific alternates that we're recommending?
How realistic do you think it is that we're going to be able to get these with the way prices have been?
This is what they bid.
This is what we're getting, okay, that's right, sorry.
They have to honor these prices, so as long as we award it, so that's what they have to do it for.
Okay.
Obviously, we do have some contingency in the project, about $800,000. That may not be enough for a renovation, we have to keep an eye on that part of it. But there is some money in the contingency for the project as we move forward.
And using your judgment, Dr. Perkins' judgment, and Mr. Jinnell and the architect, did we pick up all of the alternates you felt, were there any that were...
Yeah.
If we just spent another hundred, if we just spent another $100,000, we could do X, Y, and Z and maybe we should think about that. Are there any that we should have thought about?
No, I think we picked up every alternate plus some.
Okay.
That we probably couldn't do ourselves for, you know, for example, we didn't, you know, a couple additional trees or like the courtyard. That courtyard's actually very nice in the school, it's one of the nicest in the district. And so if we want to add benches and things like that, we can do that without paying extra added costs. So nothing, you know, what the teachers would need and to bring the building up to date, it's all included in here.
Kind of ones we didn't select was like the student dining sound system. It's not a very big dining room there at Kirkville. And the bid was like $35,000 for it, so we chose not to do that. We could always add it later. I think Kurt had said as, I mean, these alternates are set that we can do them later. So the wiring could be there, things could be there for them.
Right.
And we can just do them later. So that's, we felt very comfortable. We took, we took majority of the alternates, so...
Good. And timeline-wise, we're looking at, it'll just be the whole next school year? We don't anticipate it going over?
No.
Never do.
We don't, we never know for sure.
So July of '24?
But...
July of '24 is the anticipated completion? So we're hoping?
Okay.
You know, there's are some long lead items that, you know, Gar Miller has expressed to Pepper that try to get your stuff into us early so you can order it. So if it's going to take a year to get here, go ahead and get it ordered. I think you mentioned generators and a few other things.
Electrical is running like 60 weeks right now, I know for sure. And I think HBC is doing the same thing, so...
60, did you say 60? Over a year.
Over a year.
Generators and switches and all that, I know that for sure, so...
Yeah, so you mentioned get their submittals in quickly so they can get that stuff ordered. You know, some of that stuff is out of their hands. We hope they're aware of it and they get things worked quickly. Because there really isn't much leeway, because school starts in August and we got to be in.
Yep. All right, any more questions about Kurt? School buses. We're getting a few more.
Just two, the motion approved two 72-passenger school buses, just to continue to upgrade our food.
In addition to what we have, are we trading in or...
I think there's a couple we're trading in. I think the handicaps, like a small one now, it's going to a bigger one.
Yep.
It's just replacing, most of this is getting paid out of Esser-type money?
Okay.
We have money in Esser for it.
I just didn't know if we were net gaining any buses or if it was a wash.
Not that I'm aware of.
It's just to upgrade and take care of the ones that need to not be utilized anymore.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. We have items L, M, and N under 8 still.
Motion to approve L?
Second.
So this motion is to appoint an advisory committee to make a recommendation to the board regarding the future utilization of Potascaola Elementary. So that would be opened up to the community. We would select members to be on that committee and then we'd work together over the next couple, next couple of months to talk about that building and what it can be utilized for and how the community feels about that and what capacity. And then a recommendation would be made to the board. The board could attend those meetings as well and participate, depending on how many of you there were. Well, actually, no, because we'll open it up like a regular meeting, so you can all participate. So that's what I'm asking the board to consider is an advisory committee so we can get a feel for what the community would like to do with Potascaola.
So when you're saying a regular meeting, you're saying that the public notice will go out?
Yes.
Maintaining, okay.
It doesn't have to be set in this sort of setting, like this official? But we'll have to follow, you know, all the sunshine laws.
Yep. Guessing similar to the focus group things that we had prior to the building project?
So once we put something out there and get, you know, find out who wants to participate and narrow that down, then we'll announce the dates of the meetings and agenda and all that sort of stuff.
So we're looking to like advertise this to the community?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many people we may include in this or we...
I would say, you know, less than 15, 15.
Okay. All right.
And once the recommendation is made, the committee disperses, it's done?
Yes, the committee will be dissolved as of June.
Gotcha.
That's kind of the timeline they recommend.
The board has to take action to dissolve it, the way the policy kind of read.
So we'll, I'll get that, I'll have that information out as early as next week pending approval of that.
Any more questions? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. M and N. Motion to approve M and N?
I'll second that. So I was going to have Jeff come up and speak, if that's fine, if they're ready. And Adam from the Y is also here.
Okay.
So if you have any questions for him too, but Jeff, do you want to come up first?
Good evening, thanks for having me. So I wanted to say thank you to the board for your willingness to open your doors to Potascaola Library and working through us to being able to use that space over at the school. We became aware of another space end of January that had opened up that wasn't previously opened due to somebody moving out. So during, because of that, we started vetting that space at that time and talking to the Y about it and going through the lease and everything. And as we started thinking about it geographically, it made sense. It's a stone's throw from where the library is located. Looking at the space, it is one big open room, whereas at the old Watkins Middle School, it was kind of broken up into about five or six different spaces. So from a service standpoint as well, it made sense for the library to continue conversations with the Y. So those continued, the conversations continued and the Y had their board meeting this morning. So we had to be respective of their time to have their board meeting before we made an announcement on this. But I just wanted to say thank you for your willingness to open your door to us. I'm sure we'll partner in the future on different services or programs we may have. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
No, I just wanted to say, I, we're really excited to have been able to partner with the library, but recognize that this would be better service for your patients with the location, but looking forward to future relationships down the road. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to talk about N?
And N is, we have five modulars, three at Kirksville that have to get out for the renovation and the two at Potascaola not being used. Kind of reached out to Brian McLone from Mobile East to see if he'd get a quote. We had one vendor talk to us and they were willing to take it out and not give us any money because it does cost them money to remove it. They got to do a lot of work. So one vendor was, was taking out, we won't charge you, we won't charge you anything, but we won't give you anything. Brian McLone came in today with this option to give us $1,500 per modular for a total of $7,500. So that's better than nothing, it's a little bit. We have to get it out before they start the renovation at Kirksville. Just came in today, it's why it was added late. Wanted to get on agenda, get the board to hopefully approve selling these five modulars to Mobile East for that $7,500.
The ones at Potascaola are not being used now anyway?
No.
So we're basically, we would be paying to have them removed?
Basically, right now, if it was part of the contract, we would have to pay for them to remove them, yes.
Okay.
Or another company would move it, but wouldn't give us anything. So this is the best offer we got for them.
Okay.
I have to say, when I saw it on the agenda, my heart dropped.
I did too.
It was like, no!
What happens when you have to buy them? It could be more than $7,500.
Yeah, it will be more than $7,500, but hopefully we don't need it right away.
Any other discussion on M or N? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 9, treasures items, A and B, donations and statement of purpose.
Motion approval, 9A and B.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
It's the usual donations, but thanks, we really appreciate it again. We have a few statement purposes that came in that we asked the board to approve for the year, so fairly routine.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 10, superintendents items.
Can you pull up my... My tan. Will you hand me the clicker? Clicker. Who's the clicker? Thanks. All right, we'll get this up here. A very small, short presentation to give you an update on our substitute situation and our fill rates. So what I did was took a look at a 2 and/or 3... So what I did was took a look at a two and or three year only for the month of January trend of our sub coverage. And if you'll notice, so the yellow is 2023, obviously that's January. So you're going to see, and then the red or dark orange is 2022. So you're gonna notice for the months of January through March, and I'm gonna give concrete numbers here in a few slides, we have been, we've had a higher percent sub coverage of filled positions for all three of those months, which is really good. We actually had the highest we've had in January in a long time at eighty, almost 88%. The same for April and May, so you'll notice again, a trend of a higher percent fill rate in both of those months. August through October, so I'm going to show you two trends where you're gonna see the opposite and give you an explanation, but you'll notice for September and October, again, we're the highest we've been in a while as far as our sub coverage and we'll touch on August here in a moment. And then the same for November and December, you're gonna notice a lower trend in December and higher in November, and I will explain that in a moment as well. So these are the two right here, our two outliers. Again, you're looking at August and December. So in August of 2020, that's when we delayed the start of school for pandemic preparation. So we actually had only 57 positions that needed filled, as opposed to the last two school years, 149 in 2021 and 184 in 2022. And mind you, those are not actual total absences, those are positions that just need filled. So if you had, for example, a guidance counselor or someone who doesn't need a full-time sub out on that particular day, if it's only one day, that's not counted in there. So that, that's why you're looking at the difference in August. And then in, in December, the, in the 2021 school year, we had that little shutdown during that break from Thanksgiving to Christmas, so we only had 58 absences that needed filled in that month. So that's vastly different than the couple hundred that were needed the next two years. So that's why you're seeing a difference in that trend. It'll be interesting to see what comes, you know, as we continue on with that, but that year is going to be higher based on those two variables. And then if you can read this, you can actually see the percent of coverage, just to, you have an understand of what we're looking at here. Again, I, I put the August and December in yellow so you could see the difference in trends, although noticing, you know, in August from 2021 to 2022, that's substantially higher. Again, not as high as 2020 due to the fact we were only in school a few days, but increasing on the right way. And in 2023 for January here, last month, we had an 87.59% fill rate. So we, we are increasing and we are doing significantly better than we were before as far as our coverage is concerned. And these are our amount of substitutes, so you'll notice in the, the year that the pandemic hit there in the spring of 2020, we had 106 substitutes. Now, that's before they allowed non-degreed substitutes. So then during that 2021 school year, we went down to 72 and that, that definitely caused a strain on the teachers and the buildings. In 2122, they allowed us to have non-degreed subs, which our instructional coaches trained a ton of individuals that year, which has drastically helped us out. And then again, we're, we're pretty equal to last year with this year, 132 substitutes, which is obviously definitely helping our fill rate and significantly higher even than the 1920 school year. And then we collaborated with the union, not on a pay incentive, but an extra day incentive on the teacher workday. And so just to kind of show you what we're looking at right now, we have 64% on our teachers that had less than five sick days, which equals out to 179, which is pretty fantastic. And we have 20 that have zero sick days this year. So that is, that's really fantastic and also helping us, you know, with those fill rates and those percentages. Are there any questions on any of those slides or?
The state's still going to allow us to?
Yes.
Do we do that?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. And then I also wanted to share, you can take that down, Jeff. Pass out these and update on our enrollment.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at an increase from May to May of 122 butts and seats for kids. So that does not count, you know, students that are open enrolled or, you know, other variables. The interesting fact though, what you don't see when you're looking at this graph is we actually have from last May till now, 350 new students to Southwest Lakes schools. So the enrollment increase is 122 students, but the actual new kids coming in is 350. So when you're calculating the withdrawals versus the new, I just think that's a fascinating number to hear about, how we're growing each year, new families coming in our community. But the actual increase is 122 students.
Does that include the digital students?
Do you have any questions?
All right. All right, we have a couple requests to speak on non-agenda items. Mr. Clifford? Just a reminder, name and address, and you have five minutes. And Mr. Jones?
I am the father of four children.
This is me presenting.
Mr. Clifford, are you addressing the board this evening?
I have a final signing to pass out to you to explain that I have been fighting for my children and fighting with the attention of everybody in this district. I have been turned down criminalized. This is a picture.
Mr. Clifford? Mr. Clifford, are you addressing the board today?
I am addressing.
Then you need to speak in the microphone, so.
They can hear me fine. Actually, we can't, we're not speaking on the microphone. So I need you to go ahead and look at this stuff and be able to see what kinds of arrests my children have been under. There is a, two of their allegations that go along through Ohio Department of Education based on a federal law that we've violated multiple times by Southwest Lakes schools. That's just one. The other incident is going to talk about the pictures that was put in my children's file criminalized me.
Mr. Clifford, I'm gonna ask that you face the board if you're going to be speaking to the board?
Without a court order, I was criminalized, victimized. And I'm here to let any parent know that if you have experience, love experience over three months as a 32-year veteran teacher and administrator, it's not gonna end and I'm here to help you. You have my email address, it is lclifford2488@gmail.com. If you have any problems, please see me. I'm here to help you. If somebody's in, I will help you if you have a problem. And if you've been discriminated against, then you may also want to take a look at the file. Also, it would be maybe a complaint to Ohio Civil Rights Commission. If you look at the file, you will see certainly that I have been victimized as a black man against a white mother who has spread lies about me. You can see that in the file. And again, anybody who wants any more information, I try to keep it very simple. I have a file I can email to you. If you need my help, I'm here to help you. I'm a veteran teacher, I like to certainly do that. This is not about me anymore. It's never been about me, it's been about my children. Last time I was here, the president actually looked at me, watched as if I was bothering anybody, so that's why I'm here talking to people, because I have had my back, your backs have been turned on me for the last three months at least, and certainly for the last four years. I got total silence or I get, I'm, I'm still actually waiting for my son's, son's records. This is my daughter's record.
Rebecca Morrison? Remember, name and address and you'll have five minutes. And you're addressing the board.
Hi, my name is Becky Morrison and I live at 39 Sellers Lane. I have two children that attend.
Hold on, Ms. Morris, hold on, please. I don't want your time being taken up.
Can you find the easy thing?
He needs, he's out of order.
Mr. Jones, can you start our clock over?
Yep.
Mrs. Morris?
My name is Becky Morrison, I live at 39 Sellers Lane. I have two children that attend Kirkerville Elementary. My husband and I are Watkins graduates as well. I love this district, have the utmost respect for it. Over the last six months, when I learned about the library situation, which I know was done as of today, I've been concerned, but I have faith that our district would make the right choices. When I learned about the situation back at the September school board meeting, because I was attending here, my knee-jerk reaction was I did not like it. I discussed it with my husband, we decided to wait because we had faith in the district. But we viewed the school on February 5th, or January 5th at the open house. We saw that the space layout, we asked questions of the teachers, but did not feel the situation was carefully considered. The communication, the rest of this is still ongoing after noon today. But I just would suggest maybe, if possible, to have better communication. I know at September, the library came, they initially came in August and they presented it, you guys asked for some more stuff, and maybe in November it was agreed upon. And I had been following it since I'd heard about it, and so I would maybe just ask as a parent of the district, there's a lot of communications coming out from kids. They're coming home from the teachers, that's coming from the district on registration and this and that. I would just maybe ask that if a decision is made at the board meetings, that's gonna affect our children in a massive way, to maybe get the communications out a little bit. Maybe not everyone's gonna read those communications when they come out, but to get it out, get it out there so that when people are asking questions, we live in a day and age of social media, we might be able to get some. Now, yes, people are not the greatest on social media and some, there's bad stuff and there's good stuff. But I learned a lot of stuff being able to follow it. I learned a lot of questions I was putting out there saying this is my concern, does anybody else have that? And a lot of people came to me saying, what are you talking about? I said, well, I heard this at the September meeting and I, this is still going. So maybe just to help with the view of the parents here at the board of our district, maybe get some communication out on those major issues. When construction is gonna happen, one thing I view now, we still have a bid for our, our students while we're out. So my son has road rash on his face because he was going for a basketball and got knocked over and his head went into the ground. Two days prior, he had his entire knee, left knee was ripped off of skin hanging when he came home from school, because he's got a playground that is not as nice. And if we were still in our building, because we don't even have a bid yet, we would have had a better playground or a softer playground. He got scrapes and stuff. I'm not saying that, you know, he didn't, but we've only been there for a couple of months and I've never had road rash on my son's face come home from school and he's a second grader, he's been in school for four or five years now. So maybe just, maybe send out those better communication a little bit quicker so that we have time to voice our concerns, voice our opinions. I do know that when we showed up at that open house on January 5th, a lot of concerns were made about the playground initially. That was one of my initial concerns when I spoke with the assistant superintendent on that September board meeting night. And I feel like a lot of changes have been made since then, but I feel like they've also been made hastily, where if we could have thought them out a little bit further, then we might have been able to come up with a better situation. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For hearing us.
Thank you.
I apologize if I don't pronounce this right. Ms. Stasowski?
It's okay, it's a hard one.
Oh, did I skip over Mr. Troutman? I'm sorry.
Can you go first?
Yeah, I apologize, Todd, or Mr. Troutman.
Got me all hyped up there, thought I had another chance to sit there and wait. Thank you to the board for being with us tonight and thank you Dr. Perkins for being here as well. I want to also thank Mr. Rothweiler for making a point that I, I was wondering how I was going to make. And I unfortunately haven't had the chance to talk to everybody on the board, but I have had a chance to speak with Ms. Spindler and, and Dr. Perkins pretty extensively about everything. And besides beating a dead horse on communication, because there was no communication. The word of mouth was the majority of what, everything was relied on for the entire move of the middle school. And now everything with the library, all the communications going on, they actually came out on a final call, which was nice, but that also is just an example of how fast and how many people you can reach when you actually use those modes of communication. And I also, Mr. White brought up earlier, policies, policies that you yourself follow and the things that we establish to, to govern what we do in the schools. That's what all of these policies are for. That's what we, we all go by. We as citizens follow laws, you as board member follow the policy that you put public for us to read and then judge your performance by. That library move, that idea was against the policy that you yourself as a board set forward to us as people, as community to hold you to. And there was a direct quote from your policy that said that that library was not able to operate during school hours, but you 100% were knowingly going to do that. And there was no mention of the, any of the backlash that you received, Ms. Spindler, and the condescending messages that you also give back, and not mentioning the people in the back of the room who are here to speak on that exact event. And you thank Mr. Rothweiler and you want to look forward to the things that you're, there's no part of this where our children were put first. There's no part of this where the school district had the benefit or the outlook for our children. And I want to, with my time left, also touch on more of the middle school move that we've done. Again, I love everybody that I've met at that school. All of the people, I'm a very jovial person, I've introduced myself, I'm very open and honest, we communicate, I love them all. You cannot explain to me why we have put our children in a position of putting, moving them with no playground, with no thought of a playground, with more thoughts of a building and business moving in than playground equipment. Now, we have two garage pits and we have a, a large yard that the teachers do not allow the kids to go in when it's wet because of mud, which makes sense. When I was a kid, we were allowed to tackle each other, so I don't really get it, but okay, I'll, I'll deal with that. You don't have equipment, you don't have a space for them to play. You have two ball pits, concrete and a bunch of balls. You took these kids from a castle that you're thinking about ripping apart too, which needs to be honestly more open to the community as well. The renovations going from, or the, the absolute back, I, I can't even, I'm having trouble finding the word. The jarring nature of sending our kids to school at a place that they love so much and then to send them to this, when you also dictate planning and future planning of facilities, would this construction project not be capital improvements to a school? And we're just now bidding for the job that you've already moved the kids out for. Like that, your policies dictate that you are supposed to have these ducks in a row well before we are speaking with our concerns. And so I would like to ask the board to please, I don't just want to sit here and rail against and then not give any, any way to help the community, because I want to be involved. I am dying to be involved because it seems like I'm a decent I am dying to be involved, because it seems like I'm a decent vector to get some information out in a calm, decent way. I would like bi-weekly, if not monthly, updates on when you're going to get some equipment for our kids. And I would also like the same updates on the construction project that you are giving yourselves four weeks of buffer for our children.
Thirty percent, thirty seconds left.
And I don't even think that it's really four weeks. But you, you're, you're saying July is going to be the end date and I'm in construction. That is a pipe dream nest. So thank you for your time tonight. Thank you, everybody. I hope I got everything from everybody that wanted me to say stuff. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. I will try to attempt this last name again. Ms. Stasowski? Ms. Amanda, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Stashowski. I live at one eight three Ellington Boulevard. I think we're in the same community. And I'm a parent of a first grader at Kirkersville Elementary. And I was coming here tonight to ask for the reconsideration on housing the public library with Kirkersville, but was thrilled to read that the library found a new location. And it was an answer to our prayers. We are truly grateful that the library decided to change venues. Safety has always been our number one focus in regards to the library being placed in our elementary school. And I would like to see the board move forward in placing an SRO officer, even though the library is not coming into our building, to still place an SRO officer at our school, as this would provide the safety and security our children deserve. And as parents in the community, we will continue to develop this partnership with the school board as we all strive to keep our children safe and provide them with an excellent education. Thank you for your time. It's a lot shorter than what it was before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teamsters Local 413, Southwest Looking Education Association?
For those of you that don't know, I am Paula Ball. I am the president of the Teachers Association. And I'm excited to see our community involved in here tonight. I would like to clarify that teachers have no say in recess. So there's indoor, outside, on pavement. Okay, so no teachers are deciding if kids can go on grass or not. So that is for those above our pay grade. All right, so as you know, the board, we, Lee had asked, the teachers had asked to meet with the school board to talk about ideas, concerns that the teachers have regarding our schools. And the school board, as of today, still declines to meet with us. Therefore, we collected cards for nearly all members, asking them what could be done to improve teachers and students' working and learning conditions, and are sharing the teachers' ideas and concerns at each board meeting. This month, I would like to discuss the use of time. The one thing I think every teacher could use more of is time. And perhaps some of us here can relate to that. It seems like there's not enough time to do everything we need to do. Many of the comments from members focused on how their time is used and what can be done to save their time for other things. Over the next few months, we will focus on various themes under the idea of time. But today, we wanted to concentrate on meetings. Okay, most of a teacher's day is spent instructing students, directly involved with students throughout the day. But all teachers get a daily planning period, which is a time where they can do lesson plans, grade papers, run copies, communicate with our parents, anything that needs to be done. And so that time is protected in our negotiated agreement. It is something that is very important to our teachers. And so however, quite often, and it seems like increasingly often, the number of meetings that we need to attend for various student needs, for various things that go on are increasing substantially. And so we have members having four or five different meetings when you add up committee meetings and this meeting and that meeting in the course of the day. And it becomes very difficult to get done, all the things that need to get done. Our negotiated agreement actually addresses meetings like IEPs, 504s and those such meetings, and says that the district will use substitutes for those meetings, so the teachers do not lose their planning periods. Now, there's a lot of people involved in those meetings, that's not always going to be possible. And so there are times when those meetings are going to have to occur during those times, and teachers can volunteer to attend those meetings. So I met with Dr. Perkins and Mr. Tancheski and, and we shared our concerns. And Dr. Perkins, as always, was willing to listen to us and she is going to do some things. But I wanted to share with you some of the things we suggested that might solve some of this, which she is working on as well. So one of the things we said is, we think part of the problem is, there's many different people for various reasons that have to have meetings that teachers have to attend. You know, so we have 504 meetings are done by one person and our IP meetings, our manifestation here. You know, there's a lot of different meetings that occur. And so we suggested maybe there can be some kind of process where we know how much the same teacher is getting pulled to those meetings and can we try to kind of spread who is attending those meetings? Also, not always possible. Some subject areas are going to be needed more often. And also, we talked about, do we need all the teachers at the meetings? Could we just have one teacher? Get feedback from more teachers and have one teacher represent the concerns of those teachers? And so we really just think that that is something that we could do that would help our teachers prepare for our students on a day-to-day basis. The other thing that we expressed some concern and gave some examples of where we were concerned is notifying teachers as much as possible, you're going to be needed for a meeting. Because when they're suddenly told with no notice or very little notice, it impacts their day. It impacts whatever they were planning to do with their students sometimes. It impacts, sometimes they're pulled from classes unexpectedly with no time to plan. So that's really a concern. Our members are concerned about, we tend to be planners. We tend to like to know what's going on and have a plan and have time to do it. So it really throws us off.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
So obviously, that's not always going to be possible. I guess what we're asking at the end of the day is that we really try to be as thoughtful as we can of when teachers are being pulled, who is being pulled, and how we can try to protect their time as much as we can, given our, our circumstances. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item twelve, motion to adjourn into executive session, and there will not be business after. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, we are adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. We are returning to open session from executive session at eight twenty-eight PM. Mr. Jones, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Present.
Mr. Zany?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here. Item thirteen, adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes, we are adjourned at eight twenty-nine PM.